Okay, I think it's like 1301 State Street or something like that. I can't remember the exact address. But it'll be that June 18th, you'll see live music, foods, educational, vendors will be set up. I believe they're also doing like an event on June 17th, like at Pineapple Ladies or somewhere like that. And then there are also some things on June 19th. So that whole weekend is going to be designated for that. But I hope I did a good job of that.
Thank you, Mr. Troop. Johnny Johnson, did you want to add anything to that specific topic?
Uh, Joe Izzo, thank you very much. I'm glad you had time.
Okay. And we can remind everybody at our next meeting also, maybe Angela will be able to join us for that. But, uh, because we do meet again before Juneteenth weekend. Thank you. Okay, Lori, I'm deferring back to you.
Um, public comments?
We have to ask for any, are there any repository sales?
Oh, yeah. We know there aren't any.
Okay.
Sorry. Any repository sales? Any repository sales? Any repository sales? No one's here to speak on that? Okay. Now we could go to public comment. If you could clearly state your name, your address for the record. We have someone on the agenda. Mr. Sapienza? Yeah, I'm Italian. I don't think I did that. Oh, there's no I. Sapienza, sorry.
Close enough. People have pronounced my last name way worse than that. Thank you very much. Good morning, Council President, Vice President, and all members of Council. One question. Am I allowed to take this off when I'm speaking? Okay, thank you. First, I wanted to just take a moment to commend you on an ordinance that you passed, I believe last year, regarding the use of fire pits in the city. There was a limitation put on it as far as time and, you know, it gave the appropriate authority something that they could enforce if things were out of control. So I want to thank you very much for that. The reason that I was here today, and it's a, it's a minor thing, but I think it's one of those housekeeping issues. People who have lived in the city or committed to the city, it's the little things sometimes. And what I experienced is somebody had parked a vehicle in front of my home that hadn't been inspected since 2017, and that was just left there for weeks and weeks. So you start to go through the process. And for the record, I was a City of Erie constable for 18 years. I currently serve on the Board of Directors at the Erie County Convention Center Authority. So I have a little bit of familiarity when something doesn't look right. And, you know, I called down to Parking, and everybody that I spoke to was very professional. But it seemed to me that there was a lack of a structure on what they can and can't do. So it sounded to me as if, okay, they get it, you can ticket them. Then 72 hours later, they can get another ticket, and then after that, it's referred for towing. And, you know, to quote the young man from Parking, he said, well, it could be two weeks, could be two months, things like that. I understand it's out of his control. And I'm certainly not denigrating the department at EPD. They have a hard enough job as it is. But I think that if something was put in place where there was a time where, you know, something like that is identified, the clock starts, and then you know when there's going to be an ending to it. I think that that would be very helpful. And if anybody here has seen the movie The Little Things with Denzel Washington, I do believe it is the little things in a city. It's little things like that when you have people who are elderly and there's a vehicle left in front of their home. They can't park their car in front of their house to get in and out of their, you know, get their groceries in and out. They have to walk further. And I think when you give people, professionals, a structure that they can follow, it gets followed. So that was just a suggestion that I had, and that's pretty much, I brought some pictures of the vehicle, but it's since, ironically, at 1:00 in the morning, they pushed it out there almost as if they knew who I called and knew I was going to be here. So, you know, regarding the opening comments, you know, from Council with, you know, gun violence and whatnot, you know, speaking of a car that was unsightly sometimes seems trivial. But it is one of those things that it gets, you know, it gets a citizen's attention. When you, you know, you want people to live in the city, make an investment in the city, not just where everything's rental, where they buy a home and they take pride in it, as opposed to looking to move outside of the city. So I want to thank everybody for their attention today and for the job that you guys do. Having served as a public official for a while, I know sometimes it's not appreciated. So I just want to say I appreciate each and everything that you guys do. Thank you very much. How you doing?
Thank you.
Have a good day, all.
Good morning. City Council, Johnny Johnson, 223 Walnut Erie, PA. I believe you have something in front of you, but I have some worries that I would like to give to you. As we move towards making Erie, PA a state of diversity, equity, and inclusion, many efforts have been made to document and leave a legacy for future generations of the contribution and accomplishment made by Erie African-Americans in making Erie a better place to live. We have come a long way through the efforts of Erie Austin Culture, our West Bay Front, Shared Heritage, the Burley Legacy Alliance, and a host of individual citizens who see the need to discover and retain this history. City Council has added to this ongoing process by passing ordinances that include street naming for individuals, and I commend those efforts. But in these efforts, let us leave no stones unturned and no individual left out. I firmly believe that before another day lapses, before another week disappears, before another month concludes, and before another year passes, that we honor a noble Erieite, one who affected many changes in Erie, in the state, and the nation by forming locally the Heritage Borough Society and being instrumental in the resurrection of life and work of Heritage Burley in the minds and hearts of people of this region. I'm asking the members of the City Council, before the sun sets and the creek rises, that in the ordinance of resolution, be tenet naming West 7th Street from Walnut Street to Cherry Street as Reverend Charles Kennedy Jr. Way in honor of Reverend Charles Kennedy Jr. Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny. I'll follow up with you on that.
Hello, my name's Art Leopold, 5341, Apple Grove Lane in Erie. Thank you, honored City Council members, administration, Erie public, for the opportunity to address you. It is with great sadness that we reflect on the horrible events of the last several weeks. Buffalo, New York, Vivaldi, Texas. We're all hoping that our actions can be taken to bring peace to our land and our communities. Those kids and our kids have a right to life, liberty, and a pursuit of happiness. We're also reflecting upon the second anniversary of the terrible tragedy that occurred with George Floyd. On a national level, the President has come forth with some thoughtful, impactful executive order regarding policing that strengthens the limits on use of force by law enforcement, including emphasizing de-escalation, placing new limits on the transfer and purchase of military equipment by state and local police, providing vital support and assistance for state and local governments to implement alternative first responder models, which could provide appropriate non-police responses. Also to institute a number of additional reforms, including establishing a national registry of officers fired for misconduct and increasing reporting requirements and transparency regarding policy practices. In Pittsburgh, a new audit conducted jointly by the City Controller and the Citizens Police Review Board provides a proposed blueprint of sorts. The audit contained 23 different concrete recommendations touching various parts of the department, priorities addressed, racial disparities in Pittsburgh's policing, and increasing transparency around use of force, and other complaints. Also encourages better data collection, recommendation around screening involvement in hate groups and paramilitary groups. They call for a clear policy banning if there's an officer involved in such groups. In Erie, I have long encouraged, as a matter of fact, before the beginning of the Schimber administration, for the administration for Council to consider updating police use of force policies, emphasize emphasize de-escalation, and respectful police community interactions. Insisting upon staffing be more reflective of the diversity of the community. Build trust with the community by establishing an independent civilian police review board, providing a non-law enforcement response option to crisis events, delivering appropriate professional intervention, and helping to reallocate funds for public service. You all were fortunate to be elected to make change, to make the hard decisions to help the Erie residents. In addressing police reform, we are all striving to serve and improve the community. It is time to invest in community centers and neighborhoods so the abundance of opportunities available to young adults are more enticing than the draw of the dark alleys and the wrong-way streets. Justice delayed is justice denied. Mr. Gladstone said that. Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Martin Luther King. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Art.
Good morning. Molly Brechtel.
And Molly, before you, I just wanted to say I've been communicating with Josh Fleishman about that. So that's why I do know that Erie County United is part of that discussion. But that's what, he's been my communicator.
Yeah, I know. I didn't mean to seem, and I know Josh has been having direct conversations with you.
So continue, I'm sorry.
Molly Brechtel, 820 Cranberry Street. President Biden took bold legislative action on the second anniversary of George Floyd's murder. The executive order states, "Public safety therefore depends on public trust." And public trust in return requires that our criminal justice system as a whole embodies fair and equal treatment, transparency, and accountability. He goes on, "It's time that we acknowledge the legacy of systematic racism in our criminal justice system and work together to eliminate the racial disparities that endure to this day." I wish the same could be said for the city of Erie. In 2020, Mayor Schimber announced the revising of police policy and procedure based on new city, state, and federal initiatives. There is a new federal initiative as part of the executive order signed last week. The Department of Justice excessive force policy effective July 19th means that an Erie resident will have more protection from use of excessive force from the FBI, DEA, and 100,000 other federal officers than they will from interactions with the Erie police. These enhanced excessive force policy includes de-escalation and resisting arrest training, mandated intervention and medical aid, along with deadly force limitations. Many of these policy concerns have been brought to the administration, most recently January 28th, at a meeting attended by Mayor Schimber, Mr. Outlaw, Chief Spernarski, Officer Lennox, and community members to discuss police reform. We came to discuss solutions and give community input. We instead were dismissed, patronized, and not able to address items outside of their traveling propaganda show. I've heard the same from our youth when giving feedback about the Erie Police Department. It's been 123 days since these policy recommendations were made. No action from the administration. President Biden also states that strengthening community trust is critical now, more than ever, as a community's cooperation with the police to report crimes and assist in investigations is essential for deterring violence. I too echo the words of President Biden. Enough is enough. We cannot wait another day, let alone 123. I call on Mayor Schimber to have his words match his actions and implement a policy that is compliance with new Department of Justice recommendations. He has the authority. I call on Mel Weatherspoon and Mel Troop as public safety liaisons to the Erie police to ensure that the current policy language is abided, and that policy states, "This department has the ability and responsibility to detect and take steps to prevent the use of unreasonable force." I'm calling for more transparency as well. And we'll be submitting a right-to-know request after this meeting. We, the taxpayers, have a right to know the total cost of the department before any more funds are allocated. And each council member has a packet with documentation. Thank you.
Good morning, council members. Joe Giancarlo, 1019 East 5th Street. Here this morning to talk about police accountability. Two speakers before me, I think, said it much more eloquently than I will. So I'll cut right to the details and suggest that the Bureau of Police's culture of a lack of accountability is evident in things like their unwillingness to join the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission, which isn't the only step that needs to be taken, but is certainly a step that would show that they are willing to be held to professional standards. I think not joining something like that when, I believe it's like 2/3 of departments in the states have speaks volumes about their priorities. Another point is that the officer in the case that was just settled is also the officer in charge of training. And I, again, would suggest that if that is the character of a person in charge of training on things such as de-escalation or other important aspects. Sorry. Now, you know, I shouldn't denigrate his character. I am, however, still maintaining that the priorities of the police department are much more on enforcement and punishment than on maintaining public safety. And I believe it's the responsibility of Council to look beyond the terrible present that we're in and create a future for public safety that addresses underlying causes. And that starts by not spending all of our art money on new police officers when we need to be funding things like, you know, youth programs and other things that will revitalize the community and not just respond to violence. Get out ahead of it. Thank you.
Good morning, Council. I hope I'm not going to be too loud because I can't hear anything. Everything's garbled to me, so I don't know how you're hearing it or people are hearing it. But anyway, my name is James Chilevich. I'm 73 years old, and I'm a disabled veteran. I live at 636 East 12th Street. I've been there for 12 years. 12th Street, I live right next to the Polish Sharpshooters Club and the big parking lot that they created, and my house is the one next door. I'm increasingly worried about the safety and the speeding that has been going on in my neighborhood, and I'm going to give you some examples. April 10th of 2020, let's just assume that Parade Street from the east side becomes our main street, kind of like State Street is here. My wife decided to take a walk and went to 10-2 Bank at 12th and State. And then on her way back home, she was walking with the light from the west side of the street toward CVS. And as she was walking the street with the light, a car turned and ran her over and broke her leg, broke her other kneecap, broke her arm, and fractured her back. She would be with me today. She used to come to these meetings. Her name was Maria Yori. She used to come to these things all the time. She can't be here because she's not well, and she's not doing good, and that's part of my problem. Now, I'm going to go from 12th and Parade, east toward the Bayfront, and from the Bayfront to Parade Street, you know, east and west on 12th Street. I took a ride yesterday, and I looked, and there are some signs that say speed limit 35. While we can forget about that speed limit of 35, that went out with spats. I've called the police a number of times and said, "Sit in front of my house, sit in the parking lot here, and ticket some of these people with a radar gun so they'll slow down." But they don't do it. They can't listen to me. I'm tired of not being listened to. A few years ago, we had a lady who parked across the street on 12th Street on the south side in the early evening hours and wanted to walk across the street to the Polish Sharpshooters. She was hit by a car, and she was killed. Seven weeks ago, at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, somebody came by 12th Street going pretty fast, I take it. And on my little front lawn, I have a little front lawn, a sidewalk, and in a curb, there's about four feet of grass in between. I have a 10-foot tree and a 20-foot tree on that thing. Somebody came over the sidewalk, went over my lawn, hit those two trees, and severed them at the root, at ground level. They left the trees in my driveway, at the mouth of my driveway, and then they also hit a pole just a little bit to the west of my house. And this is one of the pieces they left me, not a calling card or anything, just a thought. I'm visual. Again, about six or seven weeks ago, there was a car parked around 615 East 12th Street on the other side of the street, hit by a car. The car was hit by a car and completely demolished. It looked like an accordion. Saturday, Sunday morning, between 6:30 and 7:00 in the morning, a car, an older Ford Explorer, was heading east from the Bayfront toward Reed's, toward Wayne Reed, then heading toward Ash, crossed the street, and sheared off one side of a car, went down the street a little bit further, hit another car that was parked in front of a Hyundai SUV vehicle. That car, first car was, the second car was spun around, and it hit the SUV, drove it 50 feet backwards, and it crossed four lines of highway, and it ended up in my driveway. I am tired of someone, you know, we lost a lot of life last week. Someone is going to lose their life out there now that the summertime is coming. And the problem also goes on the other side of Parade Street, from French by Pfeiffer Burley and down to Parade Street. But the road has become the Indianapolis Straightaway 500. Those little signs that they have parked up that say 35 mile an hour speed limit, that's not going to cut it. And I'm ignorant about one thing. I Googled this because I'm not a computer guy. Route 5 is basically 6th Street and East Lake Road. Route 20 is 26th Street and Buffalo Road. I don't know what state road 12th Street is, but it sure doesn't get any damn attention. I have a thought. I have one quick thought. At the beginning of Wayne Street, heading west, and the beginning of 12th Street, heading east toward the Bayfront from Parade, they should put up a blinking sign with a flasher saying, "This area is heavily ticketed and watched," and maybe they can slow some of these people down. Because people are creatures of habit, and they're not going to slow down even if you change the light sequence that you guys are doing now between April and November. So something has to be done before loss of life and any more property damage to my home. Thank you.
I usually, we usually don't respond to, you know, when people come up to the podium. But just in case you weren't going to be here at the end of the meeting, I did. Okay, I did want to point out, if you, can you come back up? Maybe you can hear me. Anyhow, thank you for all that information. I know a lot of us are concerned about aggressive driving and speeding. But I did want to let you know, and anybody else who might be watching this meeting or in the audience or listening, Pennsylvania does not allow municipalities to use radar guns. City Council a few years ago sent a letter to state legislators supporting legislation that would allow municipal police departments to use radar. The last I heard, this legislation was supposedly advancing. But it would be really helpful if we could get a lot of people in Erie to contact our legislators and the chairs of those committees. I don't have that information in front of me, but I'll be happy to let you know. This is something that is near and dear to my heart. The police chief supports this. They don't have that tool. And Pennsylvania, I think, is one of only three states that doesn't allow municipalities to use radar. State police can use it, but the fear was that municipalities were going to use this to, you know, like have speed traps. We know that there's a lot of aggressive driving going on. So I will be happy to get you that information. And if you can share it with people, too. We need to have our voices heard in Harrisburg. Okay? There's all those other remedies.
I thank you for that. And just one more little item. That morning that that accident happened, when that person hit those vehicles across the street from me, the person who was driving the car was a female. She got out of the car and ran. She left a male in the car, I don't know how old he was, and two children, and she took off. But four and a half hours later, I backed out of my driveway, and I decided to go down toward Country Fair. And I was going to either go to Country Fair or the store at 6th Street. And I was at a light at 12th and Ash. And I just pulled up to the light, and I rolled down my window. I was in the right-hand lane. And a car, now this is 11:30, 20 minutes to 12, and a car went by me probably doing 50 or 60 miles an hour and went right through the red light. Now, if a car would have been coming down Ash and hit that car, we've got a major problem. But this is just motorcycles, the speed, and they try to race. It's like a game, I think, that these drivers are playing, that if they make one light, if they go fast enough, they can make the next light. And it's getting really dangerous. And I appreciate you listening, and thank you for the information. And I'm sorry if I was a little overworked, but I'm overworked. Thank you.
Well, you know, I just want to make sure we get, we have your address, but I'm going to come down and get your phone number, too. You have it? Okay.
Jasmine and I had a nice conversation yesterday, and she, I knew I could count on her to at least listen to my complaint.
Yes. And I also think we've had some other concerns about the inability of people to hear in these chambers. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. Thank you. Thank you for sharing all that. You were an on-the-ground reporter on that. So are there any other public comments?
Thank you for your service also.
Thank you.
Anybody else to speak? I think we're, is there anybody online, Frank? Didn't look like anybody was online virtually to talk.
When I asked him earlier, he said no.
There's none. Okay, thank you.
Ordinances for final passage. Council file number 16285, official ordinance number 262022, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $25,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof for completion of a citywide historic preservation plan. The contribution is from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission from the Keystone Historic Preservation Grant. Sponsored by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Keys, the Council File Bill Number 16285, and now known as a the council file bill number 16285 and now known as official file ordinance 262022 be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. Ordinance passes, yea seven, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council file number 16286, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $161,193 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof to 2022 Insurance Fraud Prevention Authority. Sponsored by Mr. Brzezinski, seconded by Mr. Troop, the council file ordinance number 16286, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16286 by yea seven, nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16287, appropriating the sum of $144,123 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof, 2022 Auto Theft Prevention Authority. Sponsored by Mr. Brzezinski, seconded by Mr. Troop, council file ordinance number 16287, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16287 by yea seven, nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16288, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $2,020 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Funding is from a check from the Knights and Ladies of St. Patrick to be donated to the Karidus Diocese of Lublin, Poland for food and goods for the Ukrainian people. Sponsored by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Keys, the council file ordinance number 16288, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16288 by yea seven, nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16289, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $932,470 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, for the following home M22 projects. Sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Nelson, the council file ordinance number 16289, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Ms.
Can, before you vote, Deb Smith is here. Would it be okay if I asked her to come up and explain this? These are the actual.
My vote has nothing to do with that money. My vote is just bringing up the fact, again, that I would much, much, much like to see single-family dwellings be a part of the money.
Right, but this is, these are the actual amounts that. I just think you need to have the background information. You know, obviously feel free to vote no, but we need to make clear to council, as Deb did in her extensive report that she gave to us and to anybody who's in the audience or listening, why we have this on the agenda, so. Thanks, Deb.
Good morning. These ordinances actually are, if you vote no for them, sir, you're saying that you don't want this funding to come to the city of Erie. That's pretty much what it's saying.
Looking at me, so I'll answer you. I told you my vote was just to bring out the fact that I keep on asking about, what are the opportunities for single-family residential ownership for our poor people? Not projects. I mean, I understand there's some very beautiful buildings out there and people are happy living in them, but it doesn't foster self-esteem and pride. And my vote was not against the money. It was against people not hearing my request for residential dwelling. Thank you.
There is funding for residential dwelling, but as I mentioned before, there's 900, excuse me, there's $932,470, the 269,951, and the $3,110,047. So you are voting to say that you do not want the city of Erie to receive this funding?
From the federal government.
From the federal government, that's what you're saying. If you have, I guess, problems with the different projects that were allocated, that can be discussed later. There is funding for first-time homebuyer as well as homeowner rehab, so I'm not sure what you mean when you mention, I guess, projects or whatever.
I'm sorry, you understand what?
You mentioned something about a building.
Right. Well, the hands property is going to be a beautiful property at Hammer Mill.
All right, so.
But those properties do nothing to foster self-esteem to the folks. Give them an opportunity to own something that is theirs and you're going to see those people prosper. That's all I'm saying. So don't tell me that I'm voting against $900,000. My vote was nothing more than bringing attention to what I said.
I think what Deb, I'm sorry, what Deb said though is if you have disagreements with how the actual money is allocated, this is, this is the federal funding that we get every year, and now we know the numbers.
Also, in regards to hands, HUD, for any home projects, we have to designate 15% of our funding to a community housing development organization. Hands is actually the only total that we have. And so if we do not designate money to them, then we don't get the funding. And they're actually doing single-family affordable housing. That housing that they're doing out at Hammer Mill will be for low-income families, so I'm not exactly sure when you say no, you know, what you mean, if you could clarify.
What part of no don't you understand? I told you, I'm not going to argue with you over this. We got two votes. The other five will vote positive if you got your money. All I'm trying to do is bring out the fact that you should be looking, the barriers that you have built up, and probably not you, but the whole organization. The people look at the application form and they say, "Ah, the heck with it." All I'm trying to do is bring out residential. Don't try to put words into my mouth.
I'm not trying to do that.
I told you very clearly what I was talking about.
There is an application process. If there are other housing agencies who would like to apply for the funding, they're giving that opportunity. We have our applications online or you could get an application. There's a two-month period where we take applications. We also have those agencies come in and do presentations. City council was invited to those. So those who chose maybe not to come and learn more about the projects, I guess that was up to you. There was a study session with city council where I think all of the projects where I gave the descriptions for are listed on that sheet. So these, this isn't the first time that we spoke about hands, giving them money.
I'm not against hands, I'm telling you. I tell you, all I, my statement was a statement that I thought was very clear. Yeah, and I think Shakespeare might have said, "We protest too much." What are you protecting?
Nobody's trying to protect anybody or protest. I wanted to make sure that council understood what this vote was about. And Chuck, did you say you wanted to say something too?
No, I said I wanted to vote, that we didn't need to have discussion in the middle of a vote.
We did, actually, don't, please don't say to me we didn't need to have discussion. We did need to have discussion, okay? I am not going to have people voting on something unless they're clear about what the ramifications are, okay? We had an extensive memo on this. I read it. I hope everybody else read it. I admit, sometimes it's confusing. There are bureaucratic things that happen. I want, I want to make sure that this doesn't get voted down. This is our funding that we're getting from the federal government. If it goes down, I don't know what would happen. That's all I wanted to make clear.
Doesn't it just get put on the agenda next time, if it gets voted down?
We are, we're running.
If it's voted down, then we just won't submit our plan. City of Erie will not receive this funding.
Thank you. So.
Voting on the ordinance, Mr. Brzezinski?
I already said no.
Ms. Flores?
Yes.
Mr. Keys?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson? Mr. Troop? Mr. Witherspoon? Ms. Allen?
Yes.
City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16289 by yea seven, nay one on first reading. Council file number 16290, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $269,951 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, for the following emergency solutions grant, ESG 22 projects. Sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Nelson, the council file ordinance number 16290, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16290 by yea seven, nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16291, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $3,114,700 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, and $5,000 program income for a total of $3,116,047 for the following community development block grant, CD 22 projects. Sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Nelson, the council file ordinance number 16291, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16291 by yea seven, nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16292, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $120,983 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof for the Port Security Grant. Sponsored by Mr. Brzezinski, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, the council file ordinance number 16292, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16292 by yea seven, nay zero on first reading. This takes us to new business, Madam President.
There's a lot of items on new business. Do you want to go through each one or do you want to adopt the balance and separate?
Move the balance, Madam President.
The ARP funds from the East Bayfront Greenway project?
Any other separations?
Any other separations? Moving the balance of the.
Excuse me, Laurie, we've been assured that all these grants are to actually, places that actually exist. As long as that's okay, I'm okay with it.
All the grant money that's on the list, you want to make sure that all the businesses and entities are after established?
They gave money to startups also.
Startup, yes, and it's there. That was my question. Some have left. Just saying.
Ms. Hoffman is here. Do you want to ask her or?
No, it's all right. Startup, I'm just saying we lost two vendors over at Northport Row. I'm just making sure that it's pennies when you're talking to money we're giving them, 2,500, 5,000. Just want to make sure that we're not paying for somebody's vacation to Cancun.
Jennifer, do you want to, do you want to come up and talk? I know you talked at caucus, but it would probably be good to let our audience and anybody who's watching online understand the, what's taking place or what we're being asked to do. Thank you.
Of course. Hi, Council, again. I just wanted to let you know, I know you had just mentioned the flagship City Food Hall. The flagship City Food Hall vendors were not eligible for the Restaurant Entertainment Industry $5,000 grant because they did not open until December. So we gave them the opportunity to apply for the flagship ARP, which was a $2,500 grant. There is, I believe, one that actually took advantage of that, and that's Dina's. And she, you will see her on that list or that restaurant on the list of flagship ARP. To the best of my knowledge, with everything that was given to us at the time of application and review, every single one of these businesses are in business or in process of startup for that. I'm not sure if you have something specific that you want to ask me about? I can probably address it better.
I have a specific question.
Sure.
34 is three Bs that recently had to change in ownership. Is that just for his new catering business?
That is. That is. When I spoke with JJ, he was, when we first started talking, he had not sold the business yet, but he was very open and transparent with me and came to me and said, "I sold the restaurant, but I'm keeping the catering and this is what I want to use the money for." So I allowed him to go forward to the project review.
So how is, how is that, I probably, sorry, I probably should have done this yesterday. But how's that checked? Because like I know he, is the catering business based in Erie still then?
Yes.
That's the qualification?
Yes. Yes. Any other questions? I'm happy to answer about any of the applicants.
Jennifer, maybe to Mr. Nelson's point, you could just also reiterate that you have had, I believe you had applications from, for various projects that were outside the city and they didn't understand that this was, you had to be in the city, so.
Absolutely, yes. There were, there were, not many, but there were a handful of projects that we had to, that we denied, that we didn't even consider because of their address being outside of the city. I had people from Mill Creek, Fairview, apply and things, and it was just, it was a misunderstanding. And so we let them know that this is just City of Erie businesses.
I just wanted to clarify, and for people to apply, they had to do this online through the website? Is that where you guys?
Yes, there was a website to do that, yes. Yes, and there was technical assistance offered as well, so.
I just wanted to make sure, because I know that along State Street there's quite a few businesses that probably could have used some of this help, and I don't know if it's that they weren't aware of the technical aspect of it, because I know a lot of them are older, so I just, I was curious on that process. Thank you.
Yeah. Ms. Flores, I did, I answered a lot of questions and took a lot of phone calls on that. And I wish that there was more of me so that I could have gotten out to maybe more places. But yeah, we did receive 100, in the end, about 125 flagship ARP applications throughout the entire period and probably closer to 70, 75 in the restaurant. But then again, there were people, there were organizations that didn't have appropriate NACs codes for the Restaurant Entertainment Industry Relief, or they were not in the city as well. for the Restaurant Entertainment Industry Relief, or they were not in the city as well, so. About 60 of them came through for review.
Madam President, I would like to thank you very much for the service that you provided to the individual that I referred you to that had problems understanding. He wasn't computer savvy, and you walked him through a process, found out that he wasn't eligible, but you guided him to the flagship, and he's very happy, and it is helping his business. Thank you very much.
Mr. Witherspoon, it was my pleasure, for sure. Absolutely.
Okay. Are we good to vote now on the balance before we move on to the separated item?
Thank you.
You're welcome. You good, Ed? Okay.
It wasn't a question of what kind of job they were doing. Just there's so much of it here that it's kind of tough not getting verification from them exactly what's going on. So I applaud her for a lot of hard work. Thank you.
Voting on the balance, Laurie. Moving the balance of the agenda, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. Separated item number 37, sponsored by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Keys. Resolve by the Council of the City of Erie that the ARP funds previously committed to the City of Erie Planning Department for the East Bayfront Greenway Project in the amount of $1,500,000 be transferred to the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Erie to complete this project, and that the contract with the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Erie be amended to include this project. The same is hereby received by City Council and concurred with, and that copies of the resolution be ordered attached to the original contract, and that original copies be forwarded to the interested parties. Discussion?
I'd just like the first voice that I'm against transferring this money to, and the responsibility to the Redevelopment Authority. The city is without a city planner right now, and I think that we should let the next city planner decide the best way to do this without giving, giving the project away before she has a chance to weigh in on it. And also, we also lose, I think that this is very important, that the city keeps control of this organization. There's no reason why every time they need, need to write a check, they can't, you know, ask the city to write the check. There's no reason for it to be transferred, that I see, into another agency at this time. And so I will be voting no.
I believe it may be instructive to have a study session to, so that some council members or all council members, including myself, can understand more about the function of this Redevelopment Authority of the City of Erie. But I'm going to read the memo that we got from, on May 25th, from the city planner who has, has now left for another job. And that job process, the search is still going on for new city planner. So I want to make sure, because I think I heard in caucus that Mr. Keys had not read this memo. There was something he hadn't read. Maybe he read this, I don't want to say he didn't. But I think it's important for council to obviously prepare before a council meeting. So this is the East Bayfront Greenway Project. The resolution on City Council's agenda is to direct the funding and the administration of the program to develop the East Bayfront Greenway Project to the City of Erie's Redevelopment Authority. The city will enter into an agreement with RACE for the management and administration of the project as described in the city's adopted plan for East Bayfront. This strategic plan was adopted by the City of Erie on January 15th, 2020, and development of the Greenway system is the first investment the city has made in implementation of this plan. The Redevelopment Authority of the City of Erie is capable of managing the project as it has the authority to acquire the abandoned properties, and has recently received a coastal zone management grant for design of the park system. The Redevelopment Authority of the City of Erie's executive director and the new blighted property manager will work with the city's neighborhood planner, that's somebody who's with the city, Aaron Carey, to execute the project. I'm still speaking. Aaron, I don't know if I can gavel myself, but I'm still speaking. Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. I wish I had worn my hat. I'm speaking. I'll bring it next time. Aaron is extremely knowledgeable about the East Bayfront plan. She began working on it four years ago while it was being developed. It's pretty ironic that two weeks ago, I was championing the addition of green space to the Scott Enterprise Project. We have an opportunity here to put green space, a designed park system, on Erie's east side. I walked that, as we know, part of that was already, there was a little, kind of a pocket park that was developed by, or with the help of ServErie several years ago. So, a couple of weeks ago, at least I was in favor of green space. I'm still in favor of green space. We're investing in the east side. We have a knowledgeable person who works with the Erie Neighborhood Growth Partnership on this project. And yet, once again, the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Erie is being made into a demon when they got coastal zone management funding to design this park system. This is not about gent. This is not about gentrification. This is about an investment in the east side. And I, I'm not done yet. I am not done yet. I am not done yet. I am not done yet. When I was, before I was City Council President, I went to every Redevelopment Authority meeting, every land bank meeting. I was the liaison to the Blighted Property Review Committee. I made it my business to make sure that I understood how those agencies work. I will be happy to set up a study session with the Redevelopment Authority so that City Council can understand why it was created, how it works, and how we can make sure that there is public engagement.
First of all, I would like to say, I have read the memo, and it's, I can say, not collegial to say that I don't understand what's going on, when I do in fact understand what's going on, and I do, and I still have the resolve that we do not need to transfer this project to the Redevelopment Authority. And I have the right to my opinion, and I don't have, and you don't have the right to tell me my opinion is demonizing somebody or misrepresenting a third party. If the third party's not here, the third party's not here. I have the right to my opinion. Second of all, I think it's, they got a coastal grant for $30,000, which, you know, and we're giving them 1 million, 1 and 1/2 million dollars. That just, so, I understand the process. I understand, I don't think that, I think that we should allow city control. I think that this should be placed, Aaron should have control of this project, not the Redevelopment Authority. And that will be my stance on this. And I hope that everyone else here understands when you say investment into a neighborhood, we have to understand what making this greenway involves and what it does not involve. What making the greenway does involve is tearing down houses, connecting properties, going throughout the neighborhood. And I will say that people who are culturally advantaged do not necessarily understand what these systems do to people who are not. And I can say that from my lived experience, and you can't. So.
Well, good, okay, very, very good. I just want to make, I want to make, let the public know that in our caucus meeting, Mr. Keys talked about the Redevelopment Authority lining its pockets. So there, there is demonization going on. Mr. Nelson, what do you want to say?
Yeah. Mike and I chatted about it yesterday. I feel confident that he read the memo, and then we.
Say in there that he had not read something, okay?
He definitely dismissed the question. So, but we discussed it, we discussed it in context in memo. I sent him an email regarding, because the MPO has a vote coming up, and this is part, this is listed in the MPO report that's currently at a draft level. I, I'm real content voting against him on this one. And I'm, that's the benefit of having seven people on councils, that we can come up with a vote with a losing side and a winning side that doesn't have any animosity about it. So, and I appreciate his perspective with the amount of time he spends on that east side and the, that he feels the risk of, of investment leading to gentrification in a different way than I do. And I, and I, and I take that with some personal concern for my own reflection on it. So I'm, I'm real happy voting against him, leaving it to a vote, and I have no animosity.
I'm glad that you have no animosity. You don't have to be the one running a meeting every other week in which one person is, has taken upon himself to go after the Redevelopment Authority. My offer was, we'll have the Redevelopment Authority meet with council and explain what its function is, okay? And if somebody wants to talk about cultural sensitivity, I'll meet you outside afterwards. I think to borrow the words of Mel Witherspoon. I'm not going to be accused of being culturally insensitive. I'm not going to put up with it, so let's have the vote.
Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski? Ms. Flores? Mr. Keys?
No.
Mr. Nelson? Mr. Trup? Mr. Witherspoon? Ms. Allen? Resolution passes six to one. Madam President, this takes us to committee reports.
Okay, we'll start with Ed. Ed, one of the things I did want to mention is that I think Mr. Shelley, I'm going to call him Shelley, because the person who worked at the newspaper, Mr. Shalowitz, you, you pronounced the name correctly. You also, you're the head of the Public Safety Committee, so we should let him know too that, he mentioned Mo and Mel, but.
Right.
Just, just so people know, you're, you're the head of that committee.
I know very well, thank you.
Okay, so your committee report, please.
Okay, I have a couple of things. One of them, at the last minute before we came out of caucus, Yes Square said he's going to put together some type of resolution for the parking authority. Would it be a good idea to find out what exactly they're doing? Did they ever hire anybody to start ticketing cars? Last I heard, they didn't have anybody on the street doing that. I don't know. But I'd like to.
We, we did have, we had the solicitor come, but that's, that, Ed, what, do you want to speak to that? Ed Betza?
There's two issues. One is the operational issue, and that has been an ongoing project between the administration and between the authority to try to come up with an operating agreement. The biggest problem has been, as council's well aware, is we've had money going from the authority to the city and from the city to the authority. The authority does some of the functions with parking, and the city does some. The thought is to try to streamline it and have it be more efficient. So the issue of, of hiring people and who's doing what has not been resolved. I don't know what their hiring status is. I, I'm not personally familiar with that. But the final resolution of who's going to do what has not been achieved.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm trying to find out. I mean, I want to vote on something when I don't know what the parking authority is going to look like.
The separate issue is the.
Do we need it?
Is the existence of the authority.
Yeah.
And what the authority has requested and what they've identified is that in order for them to undertake a large project, they in essence have to have a long life. You can't borrow money for longer than you're alive. And right now, their request is to extend the authority for another period of 50 years, which would allow them to undertake any project imaginable with regard to improvements.
Well, I think we just need the rest of the story, that's all I'm asking for.
Okay, so you would like, we had the solicitor for the parking authority come at our last caucus, correct?
Correct.
So do you, do you want to know more about the extension of the lease before we have the solicitor?
I guess I want to know if there's a more feasible or cost-effective way to get this done. You know, maybe EMTA could take it over. They have their whole new big building up there on 14th Street. Maybe that would work. I don't know, I'm just, I'm looking for a better way for the city.
Do, do we need to, would we like to have a study session then before we even vote on the extension of the authority agreement?
We should find out what they're doing and if they really need them. Not that I love study sessions, but there's a way we got to find out.
I know, there seems to be a universal lack of study sessions, but a need for them, so. Ed, I'll talk to you and we'll see, let's do a timeline so we can get this done quickly, okay?
Yeah, that's fine. I just didn't want it to sit if the desire was to extend. That's fine.
Okay. Ed, anything else?
Yeah, one more thing. I'm looking forward to the next, our finance meeting before our next meeting. I asked the, the finance director to put together what our budget really looks like without any art money, because that art money's going to go away in three years. So we have to become, our biggest job right here, other than arguing, is, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that, but our biggest job is the budget. And we need to save money. Simple as that. And that's, I think we'll get a clear picture of how close we are to money in, money out with all, all the gadgets for three years. That's all I have today. Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Flores?
I have quite a bit. The first thing I want to announce is that the EMTA is going to be opening up their new facility on June 14th at 3:00 PM. I will probably be working, but if my client wants, I will be going there. I had a conference of the Welcoming America Convention in Charlotte, North Carolina at the end of May, and it was very energizing and enlightening to see the diversity and inclusion and how welcoming that city really represents itself just by driving through it. So I would love to work on making Erie like that for the next generation. I went to a Neighborhood Watch meeting on May 26th. It was the East Ave and Hess Ave Neighborhood Watch. They are an interesting group of individuals who care deeply about their neighborhood, and they have for a long time. They have a history of getting a nuisance bar closed down. The nuisance bar was closed down, but somehow an ordinance or the licensing was transferred, and now there's a new bar under a new name, being a nuisance in a neighborhood not too far away from the park. So they would like to be heard on what can we do to address this? So any information that we could do or I could bring back to them, I'm more than willing to be that person to communicate. I also had a decent conversation with Mr. Jim yesterday in regards to his firsthand experience of being a homeowner right there on East 12th Street. Speed is an issue in our community. We just had a three-year-old hit last night on Buffalo Road. So we have little kids, sadly, they're not as attended as they should be. But as a community, we should care about the youth and make sure that our pedestrians are not hit and left for dead. So I would love to make sure that we are, you know, circling back on this issue. Along with that, I do have a upcoming Blighted Property Committee meeting next Wednesday, so I would love to, you know, bring you guys up to base on the next City Council meeting on that one. But that's pretty much all I have. I just try to be as much available to the citizens of Erie and communicate very well as the liaison for communication. So they do send me lots of emails and call me and let me know what's going on, which I love because it makes me seem like I'm doing my job, but it also gives me the story behind the issue, which is really what people can understand and start to resonate with. So for me, continue to call me, continue to email me, continue to let me know what's going on, because that's the only way we're going to address these issues, the quality of life in Erie. The quality of life in Erie is not as great as it should be, and it's next to impossible to bring 10,000 new taxpayers here with all the issues that we currently have going on. We have people who want to leave. I want to keep the people who are here, here, so let's see what we can do to make things better for all. Thank you.
Thanks, Jasmine. Mr. Keys?
No report.
Mr. Troop?
Madam President, I have no official report, but I did want to say, as school gets ready to wrap up for the year, thank you to all educators everywhere and for all, public and private school, for all the hard work they did throughout this pandemic, and through some of the challenges they faced. Also, I clearly hear the citizens speaking about police issues. I, I hear the concerns. Also do want to give the police credit for the work they do. I mean, it's not, it's not an easy job. So I just wanted to say that as well.
Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Nelson?
I had a water authority meeting. They continue to be very enthusiastic about the upcoming Water Authority Convention being hosted in Erie. They've got some work for the region, which is always nice to see.
Chuck, when is that going to be, that Water Authority meeting?
I don't know the exact date. I'm sorry.
Just if you could let us know, because I think that's a great opportunity to.
Yeah, it's going to be statewide, all the authorities coming here. And then they've got a lot of work going in Summit. So there was, you know, you see how, how the city's resources end up being an expansion to the region and, and seeing how that produces growth throughout the community. I was given a little bit of homework last council meeting, so I, I did my homework to do a little research on the pickleball courts. I'd like to apologize to Mel. As we were discussing the pickleball, he was asking for a better description. I said that it was funky tennis for old people, and you really liked that description. And, and it's really an all-age sport, I'm finding, fastest-growing sport in the, in the nation right now. I was, the questions were brought up by a number of residents and, and Baldwin Park in particular had had some issues with the way some trees have been removed that led to some concern from residents. So I know Kathy Schoff was kind of the point person on that before, before I was elected in. So there were no surveys. They did engage, this is, pickleball courts are going on in four courts in Erie. What we're finding is that there was a number of tennis courts that were installed that were underutilized, and they're trying to find ways to bring that back into a proper utilization. So the communities that have, you know, community organizers living in them and neighborhood associations, they went to those neighborhood meetings and they discussed it with them. But in the communities which Baldwin Park does not have a strong neighborhood watch or association, they did not have the same opportunity for input that maybe the West Bay Front had. So they did not mail out surveys. There is some future additions that are planned for that neighborhood that will have further public feedback for benches, lighting, trash containers, artwork, sidewalks, and planting. Now, the pickleball enthusiasts interacted with the city and they brought up a number of parks, Columbus, Bayview Park, Second in Pennsylvania, and, and asked for space, and then they went ahead and raised $30,000 through a 501(c)(3) to help our city get further along with pickleball. Now, there's some questions about how that pickleball and tennis court usage, I have not found anyone that was opposed to tennis courts being converted into pickleball because of their use of the tennis courts. It seems like that's an accurate reflection, is that the tennis courts are not being used very well. So the tennis court in Baldwin, for example, was installed in 1996 and has pretty much, had pretty much gone unused. So there is some concerns about pickleball and the noise that it makes though. So it wasn't just like someone was annoyed that they're losing out on their tennis opportunity. They were annoyed with the idea of pickleball coming to their neighborhood. It makes it very, it's like a wiffle ball. It's somewhere between like table tennis and real tennis, and it has like a wiffle ball that kind of makes a ting noise. But in the bid, there is sound remediation in the fencing that will be installed as well as landscaped trees to further muffle the noise so that it should not be disruptive to the quiet enjoyment of that park. Obviously, it will be noisier than nothing, but it shouldn't be any noisier than tennis would be or anything else that involves people having fun. That's the main gist of it. I got a bunch of other funny stuff on there. There's a whole clothing line that's, it's like a fashion statement in some areas. I posted that on my Facebook page.
So are you, are we forming a pickleball team? Or do you have, are, is there a cutoff age for who could be in it? Like, it'd be like me and Mel and Mr. Brzezinski?
It's in pairs, so whoever you feel comfortable pairing up with on council, you can just start a team.
Okay.
Ed's got a nice reach. I, I think I might take him. But the, the, the other thing is that it's a very easy, cheap entry-level sport to do. So, you know, you could show up in pretty much any shoes and the racket and set. They had them at Dick's Sporting Goods for like 30 bucks. It's, it's a real easy entry-level spot for our community to participate. So I'm real enthusiastic. The Public Works Department offered plenty of enthusiasm about it, and they said there's going to be a ribbon cutting here sometime that we'll know about.
Madam President, I, I did see something on the news report to add to this about a lot of injuries occurring as a result of pickleball. So a lot of injuries that the hospitals are seeing are a result of people going out, not warming up properly. They haven't exercised in five years and going out there and doing this, and they pull a hamstring, pull, you know, that type of thing.
Maybe we can invent a quiet ball. Think of the money we could make.
We're going to turn that one over to the Innovation Committee Chairwoman, Jasmine Flores. Thank you, Chuck. All right, I have a couple of things on the list here. I'm glad, from pickleball to, I went to a tournament on Saturday, a soccer tournament in honor of a young Bhutanese man who had died a year ago. And when I spoke to members of the Bhutanese community, they're looking for soccer practice fields in the city of Erie because Erie first, Erie Bank, those, those fields are pretty expensive to rent. Jasmine and I were at the EMTA meeting via Zoom, and EMTA was curious about, about why so many people had signed up to speak at that meeting. And there is a concern that, you know, Greyhound has now pulled out from having a, you know, a physical person there. So Jasmine, I wanted to let you know, I talked to Dave Robinson. We want to do something, well, at least Jasmine and I had talked about doing some kind of, you know, strong letter to Greyhound asking, is this permanent or is this just a pilot project? But then moving forward, how do we make sure that there is some place for people who are using either bus transportation service to have, you know, restrooms and everything available? Right now, they're, EMTA is not able to provide. So I wanted to let you know that I talked to Dave and he said he would talk to us in the coming weeks. So you and I can both talk to him about how, how we move forward to get some attention to this, okay?
Yeah, that sounds great because as someone who uses the library regularly, I see lots of people in there with their baggage waiting for long periods of time. And it's, I mean, the weather's nicer, but that's still not the impression of a welcoming city when you don't even have a place to sit and wait for your buses in and out or a train in and out. We don't even have a taxi service. So it's just like, access to get around is next to impossible in our community. And I don't think people who don't have a vehicle realize that or a place to like be out of the elements, but thank you.
And I, you know, I always want to acknowledge all the hard work that everybody on council does, but, you know, Jasmine has gladly embraced, we talked about old people and pickleball, but we talked about attracting younger people. This summer, we do have interns working for the city of Erie. I also work at the Sea Wolves and they have an internship program. So I am looking to hopefully bring together the interns from the Sea Wolves, from City Hall, maybe other places for some type of brown bag lunch. We just got a report from the Erie Sports Commission on the economic impact of, you know, sporting events. So I don't know if we'll have a national, this pickleball thing is just going to make me like kind of chuckle for the rest of the day. Anyhow, maybe we'll be the site of a national pickleball tournament or something, but I think it's really important to listen to ideas from young people. What do they see here? You know, what are they excited about Erie? What, what could we do better at? I wanted to, I, I do appreciate, you know, the comments from the community about policing, but there was one description of something that, that really bothered me. Somebody said, talked about a traveling propaganda show. I think that they may have been talking about the strengthening police and community partnership program. I was there a couple of weeks ago at Wilson Middle School for the Building Trust Series. And council members, if you have an opportunity, you know, during the summer, there's going to be this snack patrol, but when that resumes, and I know people have, have jobs, you may not be able to, to attend this, but those conversations are amazing. And it's not a propaganda show. From that discussion, it, it took place in the Wilson Middle School Library, in the library. And I asked about young adult novels, you know, who was reading what? There weren't a lot of books in the library. I know that we, you know, people read on their, on their phones, on their tablets, but we're in a library where there weren't very many books. I, I'm on the library advisory board and we talked about trying to do some outreach, maybe even possibly during the summer. There's a book that I really like. It's called The Hate U Give. It was made into a movie. You know, that might be something. If anybody wants to be in a young book club, let me know. I'm probably not going to play pickleball. But it, it did, it, it kind of hurt to hear something described as a traveling propaganda show because all of these things can work together to improve our city. I, I do want to address the, the comment about being culturally insensitive, and I would like to ask council members if you might be willing to join me, who's apparently culturally insensitive, on some walks this summer in various neighborhoods. I went a couple of weeks ago to 19th and Cottage with Paul Gamble, and he showed me illegal dumping. And like Jasmine, we are getting calls and emails all the time from people with, talking about code enforcement issues in various parts of the city. These don't have to be long walks. They could just be, let's go somewhere to a neighborhood, look at the issues, and then figure out how they can be fixed. I think one of the things we know is that as council people, we're part-time people, we have to rely on the administration to follow up on those things. And, and I know Renee's been doing a good job in responding to people. We had somebody, do you remember the person who was here at the last council meeting who said that he had complained and his complaint went nowhere? Renee does her best to follow up on those things, but after the meeting, if, if I can, if there's like the consensus of a good night or a good afternoon or something, Mo will have a little bit more time during the summer, where we could make some walk and talks in some neighborhoods, I would really love to be able to do that this summer because I think, you know, seeing is always believing. I heard, if I'm, if I'm hearing correctly, that it looks like we may need to take, well, we'll take an additional look at the, at the parking authority.
Madam President?
The redevelopment authority and speeding.
If I may, could we ask the administration to give us alternatives to the parking authority? Because if there's not another game in, in the auditorium, then we don't even need a study session for it. But if there are alternatives, which would be cost-saving, I would welcome the administration to come in there and, and let us know what it's all about.
I think that one thing we would, we could do to address your question is that we still need to make sure that the existing ramps are not falling down. They need infrastructure improvements. But Ed, didn't you tell us that we could extend the authority without saying, we're going to have the authority for 50 years? Am I repeating that correctly?
If, if you create an authority or extend the life of an authority, at any point, if you were to change your mind, you can always undo it. And the way you would essentially do it is take it over. With that, the downside is you take on any debt. So it, it may not be as simple as saying we're just going to take it over. You got to understand that these, with the ramps that need to be repaired, there will be debt incurred, but.
Those are the questions we need to have answered. You know, what is the debt now? What is the future debt immediately? I know those ramps are not in great shape.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have those numbers. I, I don't have them with me, but certainly that's something that's, that's helpful to know. But there's, extending the life of an authority or creating an authority does not mean that it's a permanent thing. You can always undo it. It's probably not a good idea to get into the habit of creating and undoing things, but it, it is not a permanent thing if you were to create. It's if you were to extend it for 50 years, it does not mean that it would have to exist for 50.
But I'm, so am I still hearing that we do want to talk to the parking authority, but do this quickly so that we're good on that? That's okay with you, Ed?
I just.
Okay. All right, so parking authority, possibly redevelopment authority, and then the, the whole speeding and traffic issue, I think is something that it would be really, that is really something that should be top of mind and we need to figure out what we can do legally, where that legislation is on radar, where the suggestions are for the flashing signs. I do know that there are, are other municipalities that have adopted something, I think it's called Vision Zero, Project Zero, so that the, the goal is to have no pedestrian fatalities. We've had a lot of them. So, and somebody, when I went to Pennsylvania Municipal League, was surprised that we had not adopted that. So that sounds like something that we should also take a look at. Let me see if there's anything. I, okay, I think I, I think I covered everything. So when I talked about 19th and Cottage, that's one place I would like us to, if possible. That would probably have to be during the day because we need to ask somebody from the engineering department to also be there. There's standing water there. There's piled up illegal dumping, okay? All right, does anybody else want to have any more meetings or study sessions? Oh, I know, I'm sorry. I did want to mention one thing. I've been looking, the reason I am passionate about people doing their homework ahead of time is because I, I looked at, I've looked at old stories about how council functions, and I found an editorial from, I think it was 2009, where council had decided, you'll remember, Ed, I can't remember which, previous times you were on council, but at one point, council met every week. Met four times, you know, every week. Okay. So at that time, council was considering going to the two meetings a month met, you know, process. And there was an editorial in the paper that said, this would probably be a good thing because council would have more time to do their homework and to make sure that they were prepared for meetings. So I don't think we want to go back to meeting every week, but I do think that, and we get a lot of memos, maybe there's an easier way to do it so that they don't come in one email. They come like separately. There's a lot, yeah, have every, pardon me. All right, well, if anybody has any advice or suggestions on how to make sure we can get through that stuff more easily, that, I think that would be welcomed by Lori, Kelsey, Marilyn, the administration. You know, let's think about it. What, what works best for you to be able to do stuff in advance? Because I'm all for making stuff as easy to digest as possible.
We could start off with closing the agenda at noon on Thursday, the way.
We, we do do that, yeah. We, and then, you know, don't forget, we also had another holiday here, so everybody got that on time. But, you know, at one point, we were just saying to, to Renee, could you, could you do a study for us real quickly on whether we should get rid of the parking authority? We have to be cognizant of the fact that, as she told us in caucus, with this ARP funding, the county hired a bunch of people. The city didn't. It's a lot of work, so anyhow. I, I love it when people come to the podium and thank, thank all the elected officials for doing their jobs, but I also think we have to thank those who are appointed or hired in those, that capacity. All right, so Lori, who do we talk to next? Do I ask Ed Betza if he has anything, or do I ask Renee? Who's next?
I have nothing.
Okay, Renee?
Can you all hear me? Okay.
Uh, could, could be a little bit louder, I think.
I want to get three things real quick. The first is Councilwoman Allen mentioned the SPCP, and I wanted to alert City Council, but even though we cannot do those in the summertime, because school is out, we will be launching our PAL and SPCP Civic and Community Engagement Series, where we go out into the neighborhoods with police officers and firefighters, and usually an ice cream truck or some kind of refreshment for children, and we go to various parks. And we're, we're going to be kicking that off on Monday, June 6th, if any of you are interested. We meet in the City Hall West Parking Lot at 11:45. And since school will still be in session next week, we'll be going to Piper Burley, McKinley Elementary, and then the Booker T. Washington Center after school lets out. So, that day goes from about 12 to 4 for anybody who's interested. And again, that's, you know, that's a portion of what we do to help build relationships and trust in the community, but it's only a portion of what we do through those programs. Second, I wanted to just give kind of a heads-up on next steps for the Department of Economic and Development's ARP funding. We're in the process of reviewing the third batch of flagship ARP grants that we received, and then we're also in the process of reviewing the Small Business Diversity Loan requests. We meet with the project review team on Monday, June 6th, to review the first batch. And so, if anybody has applied, has started an application, or is interested in applying, they can still go to the city of Erie ARP website to, to learn more about that program, that's the Small Business Diversity Loan Program, and to make sure that their application is complete. And then, finally, the portal for people to apply for authorities, boards, and commissions is all up to date and open. We're still working on revisions to the website, but the portal is updated, so we have a number of vacancies the city council and the mayor both need to fill, and so, if you're interested in applying, we will be sharing the, the link to our social media page, but it's also available on our website. And that's all I have for today.
Renee, since we did talk about the Greenway Project, and would you just real quickly be able to let council know when the, the funding process will, the community engagement will start to find out for the park funding that we have from ARP? The, you know, the participatory budgeting, I know that that might be a little bit hung up because of looking for a new city planner, but-
Sure. I believe you're asking about the participatory budgeting process that we're going to be doing with the ARP funding. We've been working on designing what that process will look like. Since we're going to be getting a lot of input from residents about parks and public spaces within our qualified census tracts, none of the projects will actually be able to be implemented until next spring and summer, so we're planning to gear up and have this process ready for input from the public by National Night Out. And what we'd like to be able to do is have interns, volunteers with iPads at the different locations to collect resident input on what some of their priorities are in terms of those improvements, whether it's benches, or lighting, or security cameras in public parks, or splash pads, playgrounds, what, what, what are residents most interested in seeing? And then, also the locations that they're most interested in seeing those in within the qualified census tracts. And so, then, once we have that data, we will kind of develop, we will develop cost estimates, and we're looking into how we can kind of provide sketches of the work, and then, we would have people vote again on their priorities and how they want to spend the money available to each qualified census tract. So, the residents will actually prioritize the improvements, and then, we will get to work implementing them and trying to match the funding that we have available from other sources.
Okay, and I think National Night Out is August 2nd, is that correct? We got, we just got a memo about that, so-
Yeah, it's the first Tuesday in August.
Okay, and so, just to reiterate that, you know, some, because sometimes, technology can be a challenge, but having those iPads there, everybody will, at that point, is one place people can give input. Okay. Is Teresa on? Teresa? All right, is there anything else for the good of the order today?
I would just add one other thing. The Love Your Block survey is also currently open, still for input from residents. They're on Facebook, people can just go to Love Your Block Erie. And also, we'll be opening up the mini-grant application for, and this, this, this program that we've received funding from the Cities of Service Love Your Block Program for is really to build the capacity of our neighbors, our neighborhoods that don't already have neighborhood groups. So, the purpose is to try to find nucleus of residents in those neighborhoods that want to get organized, that want to coordinate some work, and apply for funding to do neighborhood improvement projects, whether those would be, and these are small-scale mini-grants, but whether those would be neighborhood cleanups, where they have five or even more residents that are willing to collaborate on a project, or also small home repairs such as front porches, or painting, landscaping, but all the work must be done by volunteers working collaboratively. So, again, the purpose of that is to try to build the capacity of residents to develop neighborhood groups where there are none. So, that's going to be opening up as well.
So, if we, if we have Facebook pages, we should all go to Love Your Block and like it, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Once again, anything else for the good of the order? Adjourned?
City Council adjourns at 10:53 a.m. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Ms. Allen.